Second.
Any vote on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of January 13th, 2016. First item of business, a public hearing to receive public input on the draft project area plan for Copper Hills Marketplace Community Development Project area located at approximately 9204 South, 5600 West, and whether the draft plan should be approved, revised, or rejected. All interested persons are invited to attend. So, is there a comment from the board? I will open the public hearing portion of this item. If you're here to speak on this redevelopment agency meeting, item 2A, now would be the time to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and move to David Oka for report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, this, the companion item to this will be item 3B, but pursuant to the purchase of the property that we did just last month, we were, are going to create a CDA to enhance the development of that property. And so when we get to item 3D, we will have Susie Becker with Simon's Bank make the presentation.
Counsel, questions? Seeing none. We have no action. We'll move to business item 3A. Approve the minutes of December 16th, 2015. Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Nichols and a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Board Member Rice?
Aye.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Higgin?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Let's pass this seven in favor.
Business item 3D, discussion and possible action regarding resolution number 181 approving the project area plan for the Copper Hills Marketplace Community Development Project area located at 9204 South, 5600 West.
Yes, Susie Becker with Simon's Bank is here to make a brief presentation before the vote. I'd like to turn the time over to her.
Thank you. I just have a few slides that will give you a little bit of background on this project area. First of all, here is the map of the proposed project area. It is a little larger than the first map that we originally started with. We didn't want to split parcels, so we just included all of the parcels that were originally inherent, thus making it a little bit, a little bit larger than our original map. Some of the existing conditions in this area, it has about 240 acres in this area, 39 parcels. The project area is currently zoned highway commercial, and it has a base year taxable value of about $10 million. There are several structures in this area, Questor Gas and your Copper Hills Youth Center, but many of those, some of those buildings are just temporary parcels. We have quite a few roads going through the area, and so only about 165 of all those acres are developable. And you'll see that on this next slide, it's only totaling 165 rather than over 200 because we were just looking at those parcels that could be developed as office, retail, industrial, and auto dealership. The importance of how we looked at our, did our best estimates on what the development pattern might be in this area so that we could project the property tax and sales tax revenues that would be generated by the different types of development. Okay, so why do a CDA? Why do we need the funding for this area? As we talked about it, we felt it would be a good vehicle to accelerate economic development, to attract an auto dealership, which are very difficult, they have very difficult regulations, specifications, excuse me, of where they might locate, limiting the distance between potential sites, and we wanted to attract one to this area. It's a very large undeveloped area, and a lot of infrastructure is needed that might pose some extraordinary cost of development associated with this area, and it's a great opportunity for the city to create jobs, a variety of jobs right here in West Jordan. It's a key commercial site. So how much revenue could be generated? Not including the 10, the 10 million base taxable value, taxes off that, but just incremental revenues that would be generated off the increased investment of about $225 million, we assume that the total increment generated over 10 years would be about $16.7 million. These are the different, different taxing entities represented by that area, and as you can see, the land share, over half of the revenues are generated by the Jordan School District. So they would be a key player in participating as part of this CDA. At the end of the 10, we're proposing a period of 10 years, which is relatively short compared to some CDAs, that we are seeing at the end of that 10-year period of time, everyone would be better off because there would be an additional $3 million of increment, property tax only here, generated annually over the base year that we're now seeing. So it doesn't include what they're now getting from the area, but this would be additional revenue. So the school district would get 1.5 million more per year, assuming those development assumptions I showed you previously. So what we are proposing is that for a period of 10 years of this incremental property tax revenue, 75% of it would flow to the agency, the RDA, and then the taxing entities would receive 25%, which would be an incremental amount of what they're now receiving. In addition, there would be sales tax revenues generated by retail-type development in this area, not by office, but by retail, and no residential is planned for the area, and that sales tax revenue could also be used if you would choose to do so at some point in time, but legally we can do that in a CDA. Incremental revenues to the taxing entities during those 10 years, now this is, this is for a 10-year period, it's 4.1 million. We saw that at the end of that period, it would be about 3 million annually, but this is ramping up, it's getting more and more and more each year until you reach that 3 million annually by the end of that time period. So they would get about 4.2 million, I guess we could say, and then them out to the agency, representing the 75%, would be 12.5 million, and if you add the 4 million and the 12 million here, you get the 16 million total, total incremental revenues we saw previously over the 10 years. So some of the summary of the benefits, really between about 3,000, 3,900 jobs, if we use average ratios for the amount of square footage per employee, could be created in this area. You'd have increased property tax revenues to the taxing entities, as we just said, of 4.2 million, increased taxable value of 225 million, and increased sales tax revenues to the city. Now this is just from what we anticipate an auto dealership might do, of 2.7 million, and there would be additional sales tax revenue from other retail in that area as well. How would you, why is it needed? What would you use it for? Land acquisition assembly, which might be one possibility, transportation, pedestrian improvements in that area, water storms, sewer, public infrastructure, economic incentives if we need to, to get a first big tenant in there, and then there would be administrative costs, we have put those in at 4%, pretty typical, that could be used to help the, our agency offset the costs of administering the area. So that, that's our presentation. Do you want questions maybe later? Should we?
Questions from board? Counsel Member Higgin?
If we could go back to the map, it's a simple question. David? So we have a little block in there, is that because it's not owned by, what's the deal with this little block on the, just, I think that would be east or west of Mountain View Corridor and...
I think that's a public facility, I think there's a pump station there, if I'm not...
It used to be.
Yes.
How it is, I don't know, thank you, David.
Other question? Counsel Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Mayor. That corner, just for clarification, that, that corner used to be the facility, in fact, I believe that we have a reasonable schedule for that coming up if we haven't already...
That is correct. There is an item that makes that...
Right. It has moved, the pump facility has moved up to that other square you see right against Mountain View Corridor, just as clarification, Planning Commission saw that a month or two ago.
We'll, we'll make sure that, that whatever that little notched-out property is, is consistent in, with the plan, that if it's private, we'll include that in for the final.
Other questions? Thank you. Return to the council for discussion. Counsel, Board Member Nichols?
I'm ready for a motion if there's no counter.
Please.
Move to approve resolution 181.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Nichols and a second by Board Member Jacobs. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Board Member Higgin?
Yes.
Board Member Rice?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Let's pass this seven in favor.
Need a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting and reconvene city council meeting. So, second. We have the motion by Board Member McConaughey and a second by Board Member Burton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, back to city council meeting. First item will be a pledge of allegiance by our captain, Chris Kinzel.
Will we have to clear the rise? By pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Okay, we have several presentations, the first being a recognition of Zach Jacob for his service on the Planning Commission, and Ellen Smith for service on the Board of Adjustment. Would you like the council to come down?
Yes, please, and Scott Lang will make the presentation.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, it's my unique opportunity this evening to recognize a couple members of our community that have served diligently for a number of years in different respects to our community development. As you have indicated, Mayor, we'd like to recognize the, the service of Ellen Smith. She has served on our Board of Adjustment since 2011, and also in the past, Ellen had served on our General Plan Committee, twice on our Planning Commission, and during that course of time, she's also been a liaison to other committees. Secondly, we also want to recognize Council Member Jacob for his service on the Planning Commission. He too has served for a number of years on that commission, and as you know, it takes a lot of diligent hours here reviewing plans and so forth, and so we'd like to recognize their service by presenting his pledge to them this evening.
Next, we have a presentation from Dr. Douglas Jackson-Smith from Utah State University. Actually, is, are you, okay.
It's Dr. Jackson-Smith that can't be here today, but my name's Melissa Hefner, I'm a postdoc, a postdoctoral researcher at Utah State University, and I'll be giving a presentation on our work with iUtah. We have a presentation coming up. Thank you. So iUtah is the acronym for Innovative Urban Transitions to Arid Region Hydro Sustainability. So in other words, we study all things water. We're a National Science Foundation study project that we received a grant for five years between Utah State University, the University of Utah, and Brigham Young.
Melissa, I'll quick it for you. May I know it? Maybe.
No worries. So, so our goal is to improve science for water management, and we've been studying, like I said, urban centers in the Wasatch Front in Utah. We've studied 12 different cities in different neighborhoods within those cities, specifically chosen because of the types of housing and types of cultural places that are, that were available in those areas. Thanks. So we're a conglomerate of different scientists from all different disciplines, hydrologists, engineers, and I'm a social scientist, I talk to people. This particular part of the study is just one piece. We do surveys, interviews, and policy analysis, for example of other things that we've done. Next slide, please, thank you. So this household survey was done in the summer of 2014. It was quite a long survey, and we tried to approach the different cities to think about what kinds of questions to put on the survey, and I will be talking today about some of the results from this survey. On water, on household water use and decision-making, we also asked questions on lawn watering and outdoor landscaping behaviors, perceptions of the water situation here in West Jordan, and as well in the state of Utah, and water policy priorities and preferences at the city level as well as statewide. Next slide. This survey, we were in 23 neighborhoods in different, in 12 different cities, like I said, that represented different types of urban areas. We had students from different universities that we trained that knocked on doors in a random sample, in a random sample of the different neighborhoods, dropped off the survey, and then would schedule a time to come back the next day to pick it up. We were able to receive a high, a much higher response rate in doing so, rather than mailing or other types of surveys. Throughout the Wasatch Front, we were able to get a 62% response rate overall, which is pretty high for social science. Next slide. Here are some of the neighborhoods, are some of the cities that we chose. West Jordan is of course one, and I want to thank the residents here at West Jordan because of the Salt Lake City, uh, Salt Lake Valley, we received the highest response rate, 68%, better than the overall response rate. So thank you for your participation. Next slide, please. This is the study neighborhood that we chose in West Jordan, this is actually a census block, which is why it has funny lines, but between Highway 111 to about 4800 West. Next slide, please. And we were able, because of the high response rate, because of the random sampling, because of the drop-off-pickoff method, we were able to get a good representation of the just adult residents in this family, we, in this neighborhood, and we looked at our baseline statistics on, for example, age, gender, and looked at them against the census, which is why we picked the census block. We're very representative, so that allows us to trust and validate the other responses that we get that the census doesn't ask on these water issues and behavior questions. Next slide. What, so what we found, and so council person's the mayor, you have the highlight reports in front of you. So these are just some of the findings that we have found in West Jordan specifically. Not so surprisingly perhaps, is that people are more familiar with the cost of water than with how much we use, and that is possibly because when we get a bill, it tells us the cost of water and not necessarily, may or may not tell us the amount of gallons that we use, or we may or may not look at that part of the bill either. Next, thanks. In West Jordan, which is slightly different than some of the other places where we surveyed, the majority of lawn watering, outdoor water use is done by residents in other cities. We captured more multi-use developments, apartment dwellings, HOAs, where other entities are actually doing the watering. So in those areas, messaging about outdoor water use might fall flat, whereas here, you know, when you're talking to residents, they're the ones who are doing the outdoor water use, so messages about outdoor water use could be very effective here. Next. And what we've also found, people responded that very few people water during the day, so we find that people are getting the message, residents are understanding that, you know, watering during the day promotes more evaporation and is not a water conservation strategy, and at least report that they do not water during the day, and, next, please, and they are aware of the outdoor watering issues. Next. This graph shows us that compared to, thanks, compared to the other places in Salt Lake Valley, people here in West Jordan feel like they can do more to conserve indoor and outdoor, and that's better, that's more people than in the other areas. People here are very interested in conserving outdoor and indoor. Next. And they tell us that they would like to conserve more if they knew, or if they thought that it would ensure their future supply, and it would reduce their water bill. Probably not surprisingly, we find this all over the Wasatch Front, of course. Next slide, or next. And people are least likely to conserve if they were given the message that the savings were used to increase development in the area, and that's something else that we found across the Wasatch Front, is that people, when water conservation and development are used both in the same sentence, that people were more opposed to that. Next. This graph shows when we asked about the current water supply, how do people feel that, people in West Jordan feel that the current water supply is adequate? Next. Oh, well, and then the next, so the queen is strongly agree and agree, but in the future, when you ask about that, it flips, that people are more concerned about future water supply, and we find that throughout the Wasatch Front to varying degrees. On the right-hand side, this graph, we asked what are the key issues, not just water, but people are concerned about a lot of things, traffic congestion, air pollution are always on the top of all the surveys that we found, again, this was 2014, the summer. West Jordan is actually unique in that the high cost of water, I don't know what the cost of water is here, but the residents were very concerned about the high cost of water. First of all, this is the, it's unique in the, in West Jordan, that water is actually the number-one issue, which in other places, things like traffic congestion and air pollution were more important than water. So water here was a factor, and people are concerned about cost. Next slide. We asked about local water quality across the board, I'd like to draw your attention to the very bottom graph here, current drinking water supply. People generally, residents generally view the drinking water quality as very good, good or very good. Next slide. We also asked, asked about a host of local policy preferences, which the top three were some of the top three favorable policy preferences, these are hypotheticals, such as limiting future housing development unless water supplies are secured, developing a system to reuse treated wastewater for residential irrigation, which to tell you the truth, was kind of a question we threw in there as a barometer. We actually didn't think anyone in the Wasatch Front would want this answer, prize. In most of our communities, there was some support for this, which is interesting, as well as building new water storage facilities. At the bottom are some of the policies that are more opposed than others, and such as implementing ordinances. In West Jordan, our respondents were very much more in favor in voluntary, in voluntary ways to conserve rather than mandatory ways to conserve. Next slide. And lastly, satisfaction with various aspects of the neighborhood. West Jordan should very much congratulate themselves because you had high marks in ranking the overall quality of, of life in West Jordan, and that's a, that's very positive. Last slide. And so for questions, the full reports are on our website. If you have any questions, Doug Jackson-Smith is the, the principal investigator, the project manager, director basically, at Utah State University, but if you have any questions that I can answer.
Questions from council, from Melissa? Looks like you did a good job, Melissa. I apologize, I thought the doctor was going to introduce you before, so I apologize for that. I was interviewed just a short time ago by Melissa on all of the items in the survey, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your cooperation.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Steve Glenn, will you make sure you connect with Melissa tonight before you both leave so that she knows who you are, and she needs, she'd like to meet with you, so, thanks. I'd like to turn the time over now to Council Member Nichols to introduce our next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief with the introductions. I'd like to invite Alan Packard and Bart Forsyth from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, the Mike, they have a presentation, they both serve as assistant general managers at the Water Conservancy, and Alan is the over engineering and maintenance for the district, and Bart is over operations and conservation. Alan, for us.
Thank you, Council Member Nichols, and thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the council members. We appreciate the opportunity to come and give a report of some current developments and activities that Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District's involved with, and Richard Bay sends his regrets for not being able to be here personally. Council Member Nichols is one of nine trustees that, thank, thank you. There's Jordan Valley's service area, covers most of the Salt Lake Valley. We provide water to cities and improvement districts on a wholesale basis, that's primary, that's our primary business. We also provide some limited retail service to certain areas of Salt Lake County that, where there was not a municipal provider originally when the property developed. West Jordan City is one of Jordan Valley's largest member agencies from a perspective of purchased volume of water, and Council Member Nichols is one of nine trustees. There's a graph of the city's contract amounts in the yellow color, and in the white color, the actual water purchased each year. the actual water purchased each year. And that constitutes most of the water consumed in the city, but the city does have several of your own wells that you use in addition to the source from Jordan Valley water. There's three primary topics which we wanted to present tonight. One is a new water supply that we're excited about, and it's the Central Water Project. And I'll note that it's a different source of water, and we bottled that specifically and put a little bottle of water at each of your stations with that particular source of water. So enjoy that. And also wanted to talk in general about Jordan Valley's capital improvement programs. And I'll cover both those areas, and then Bart Forsyth will address our water conservation initiatives. To begin with, the Central Water Project is one that was developed by the Central Utah Water Conservancy District. And they did that as a standalone project separate from the federal Central Utah Project. So the Central Water Project developed groundwater in the vineyard area, and also was supplemented from Provo River Water treated at Central's Utah Valley Water Treatment Plant. Waters then treated at that plant, commingled with well water, and in the purple line, it comes over across Utah Valley. And then, beginning here in the Saratoga Springs area, Jordan Valley Water installed a pipeline to bring that new source into Salt Lake County. That's a 48-inch diameter pipeline, and it was just completed about a month ago. There's the sources and the general quantity of the overall project of which Jordan Valley contracted for just under 12,000 acre feet. And when we realize our full allotment, it'll constitute about 10% of Jordan Valley's overall supply. The quality of this new supply is excellent. The groundwater is very low in total solid solids, and it also matches our other sources of water from the Provo River in quality. The cost of this new project supply Jordan Valley will be paying Central Utah $68 million in capital assessment fees in installments. We've paid two already, and there'll continue to be four more, for a total of $68 million. And then we pay an annual operation and maintenance cost of a little over $400 per acre foot. We also spent about $20 million on the construction of the pipeline. And I mentioned that we finished a little over a month ago, and began taking deliveries, and it's an excellent diversification of Jordan Valley's supply, and makes us less reliable on any of our other supplies, and we're very happy to have it. In general, Jordan Valley has a pretty aggressive capital improvements program. Here's a chart that shows our plan for the next 10 years. And those total up to about $350 million of planned expenditures over the next 10 years. And on this graph, the blue marks on the bottom are for repair and replacement projects. And the lighter color is for new facilities that are needed that don't provide any new capacity. And the major portion of our expenditures are for new capacity, either new treatment, conveyance, storage, or pumping capacity. Examples of repair and replacement projects. We have a large terminal reservoir, storage water reservoir in Taylorsville, it's 100 million gallons. And the first phase of that was installed in the 1970s, and we're now just repairing the concrete sealant, joint sealant, and putting a new membrane over the roof deck of that reservoir, and other repair and replacement projects. And examples of compliance projects. This is a photograph of our Jordan Valley Water Treatment Plant in Harriman. The capacity of that plant is 180 million gallons per day. It's the largest plant in Utah. And we're adding a new finished water storage reservoir, kind of right in this area. It'll be a companion to the existing storage reservoir here. An example of new supply projects. I mentioned already the Central Water Project, but here, in the last few years, Jordan Valley was a major participant in enclosing the Provo Reservoir Canal. And that's the facility that, an open channel canal, formerly from the mouth of Provo Canyon all the way through Utah County to the point of the mountain. And we worked with several other partners to get that canal enclosed. We have other major aqueducts which we've constructed. There's examples of the Jordan Aqueduct System, and Southwest Aqueduct, all of which benefit West Jordan City. Another example of a capacity project that you may already be familiar with is our Southwest Jordan Valley Groundwater Project, where we participated with Kennicott in using primarily Kennicott's money to clean up groundwater contamination. There's two elements of the project. Both elements were completed to address, to contain contamination plumes, to remediate the aquifer, and to produce high-quality drinking water. One phase of the project, Kennicott owns and operates wells and a treatment plant in this area. And the production from that treatment plant comes into Jordan Valley's system. And the second element of the project is Jordan Valley constructed wells, pipelines, and our own treatment plant to address this second plume, largely with money from Kennicott. There's a picture of Kennicott's facilities, and it produces about 3,500 acre feet per year, very high-quality drinking water. And the eastern facilities that Jordan Valley operates are the wells, a 7 million gallon per day reverse osmosis treatment plant that's located at our headquarters site in West Jordan, 8200 South and 13th West. Finished water pipelines and a byproduct pipeline that takes water from, rejected from the treatment plant all the way out to the Great Salt Lake. And our plant began operation in 2013, and we produce about 4,500 acre feet. Very good quality drinking water, using a reverse osmosis treatment process. And for the Zone B facilities that Jordan Valley constructed and now operates, the Natural Resource Damage Trust Fund funded the large majority of that cost. And Jordan Valley, about a third of the cost from Jordan Valley's. And if there are no questions on my presentation, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Bart.
Questions from council? Did a good job, Alan.
Good evening, it's nice to be here with you tonight. Alan's just given you a nice summary of Jordan Valley's efforts and progress with water supply development and infrastructure. But I think equally as important, as we move into the future, to provide a sustainable water supply, it's water conservation that also plays a major role. And so for the next several slides, I'm going to be talking about our progress and initiatives. Jordan Valley, back in around 2002, established a water conservation goal of reducing water use 25% by 2025. Turns out, the state of Utah followed suit just a couple of years ago, and adopted that same water conservation goal. And I think West Jordan has also adopted this goal. And so the question is, why is it important? And I think there are several reasons. One that I can point out is that I believe that there isn't enough water in our state of Utah to continue using water, as we have in the past, to provide water for the growing population, where we're projected to see a doubling of population from 3 million people currently to 6 million by 2060. Outside of that, Jordan Valley has basically adopted water conservation into its water supply planning. And so for us, it's essential. We need to continue conserving water and meet the goal. Otherwise, we're going to have to go out and develop additional costly water supplies. And the question is whether the water is even available. This map kind of gives you an idea of the current situation. The blue in this is our current water supply. The white is water supply that we have contracted for that will come online in the future. The green bar then shows our current water demand, excuse me. And the yellow then shows our water demand by 2060, if we meet our water conservation goal of 25% reduction. What this shows is that even with water conservation, we're going to need new water supplies, about 34,000 acre feet. And then the red then shows what happens if we don't meet our water conservation goal. If we continue to use water as we have back in 1999, 2000 time period, an additional 80,000 acre feet of water will be necessary, which can cost billions of dollars. And so that's why water conservation is so important. This is our projected growth in Jordan Valley service areas. It includes West Jordan City. Once again, we're going to see about a doubling of growth through 2060. So we're going to see rapid growth within the service area. This map gives us an idea of where we are with respect to our water conservation goal. Since 2000, our goal is based on the year 2000. You can see, over the first several years, we saw quite a reduction at a 19%. We then saw some very warm, dry years. And then after that, you can see the progress that we've made. Essentially, we're right around 14% or 15% reduction. I think that's what we can claim for the progress so far, system-wide in Jordan Valley's service area. How we accomplished that thus far, it's mostly been through education, marketing, the Solar Flow Campaign. We haven't yet adopted a lot of structural-type programs, and I think that's where we need to go, with the help of our member agencies. This is West Jordan City's conservation progress, which has been very good, about 16% reduction since, excuse me, since year 2000. So where we go from here? One thing that you'll note is that we're looking to provide more incentives in the way of monetary cash, essentially, to assist with implementation of more water-wise landscaping in our service area. You see the landscape leadership grants. We're looking to provide money to assist with highly visible, highly prominent areas in re-landscaping to show the water-wise landscaping, and also to help shape public policy with respect to what is an acceptable landscape in our arid environment, where currently we simply have too much turf grass. We're going to be looking to provide money for Park Strip Turf Replacement Program. We're going to be starting that in our retail service area this year, and then looking to assist member agencies with turf grass replacement as we move forward into the future. Advanced metering infrastructure. I think Steve Glain may have talked to you about this. This is an important new project. It's on the top of the list of every Western water provider as far as achieving new water conservation goals. Where currently, we have smart meter technology that allows us to bring water use data in almost on a real-time basis, and provide that information back to the user. And in this situation, users can actually see how much water they used when they turned their water on the previous night. It provides a great tool, and also providing information back, customer feedback regarding their use, and where we expect them to be with respect to efficient use. And then how they compare to their neighbors, to their peer group. And then wastewater recycling is also in our future. There are a couple of projects that are currently in the planning phase. We want to continue working cooperatively and collaboratively with West Jordan City. We've appreciated working with Steve Glain and your staff on water conservation efforts. We have expertise, we're willing to help. We've appreciated that West Jordan City has taken advantage of our member agency grant program. We're looking to enlarge that in the future. So that'll be something that we'll be seeing in a new RFP for that program, probably within the next month or two. So you can look forward to that. We're looking forward to working more with our member agencies with respect to water-wise ordinances. And it turns out that some of the best examples of water-wise landscaping are right here in your city with respect to some of the commercial developments that have gone in. We very much appreciate that. I think it's time we start talking about landscaping in the residential sector, and I think Park Strip is a good place to begin. And also, water rates are kind of on the top of the list. The state legislature this year is looking to perhaps introduce legislation to require tiered rate structures. West Jordan already has that. Based on the current draft bill, West Jordan already complies. So that shouldn't be a problem for you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Councilmember Hagan?
Water-wise landscape, you know, that's been, I think, used for 10 years, West Jordan, I think, can you hear me? West Jordan was educated. You know, and we've all been to the garden. I have, at least. It's awesome, you know, how to learn to make your landscape more water-wise. I, but as a, this is my question. What about artificial grass? Is that something that's water-wise? Or is that really block, you know, the water from entering the ground?
Yes, it is water-wise. If it's set up appropriately, naturally, it doesn't require any water. And there's actually a couple of homes here in the Salt Lake Valley that have it installed, that you could take a look at, and one of them is really nice-looking. It's being used a lot now in Southern California, in the Las Vegas area. So it is an alternative that someone could decide to use.
Councilmember Nichols?
All right, well, that's all we had. There are no questions?
Just motivation, you know, Mayor, and I, when we were first elected, we were able to go see the reverse osmosis, right? And I might challenge some of you councilmembers to go see it, it's pretty interesting how they're cleaning up our water that was contaminated, so it's a great facility. I'm a big supporter of Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, so.
We'd be happy to provide a tour of the facility there or of the conservation garden. If you just let us know, we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Communications? City manager?
I don't think at this time, Mayor.
City attorney?
I don't have anything this evening.
Economic development director?
Nothing tonight.
Artist, thanks. Artist director?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one item, just to give you guys a heads up. There's going to be a couple of construction projects that will be taking place near or on the Jordan River Trail, which is going to require a trail closure for approximately 90 days, from Winchester up to 70th South. They'll be putting in a new stormwater outlet structure on 70th, go up the stormwater, 70th South Stormwater Project. And then the county will be installing a boat egress on Winchester. Both of those are slated to start within the next couple of weeks, hopefully. So up to 90-day closure there. So hopefully by early spring, it'll be up and running. And then in the spring, we're going to be doing some overlay and ceiling work on the asphalt down there, so that'll require another week. So that's all I got tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Finance?
I don't have anything tonight.
Public works director?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got two items. First of all, we wanted to let you know that the 70th South Stormdrain Project that you approved the construction for, the structure contract for a couple of weeks ago, we've had a pre-construction meeting yesterday, and we're going to be issuing a notice to proceed most likely next week, once we get the final permits from UDOT. It's a 150-day project. There would be some traffic impacts, but we're trying to mitigate those and make those as small as we can. Also, I sent out yesterday to everybody a copy of what UDOT is doing as far as the Bangor Highway overpasses. They want to come in the next couple of council meetings and make a more detailed presentation, but they put together a package that will address 5400 South, 70th South, 90th South, and 114th South. They're doing the environmental work right now. They plan to begin construction sometime in 2017, so we just want to let you know about
Thank you. Chief McConaughey?
Nothing like Mayor, thanks.
Chief Shepherd?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just to let you know that Lieutenant Bruce Sanders went back to Quantico for the National FBI Academy, and will be there for about 10 weeks, and we're excited to see what new information he brings back to us.
Thanks. Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to publicly say welcome to our new council members. I'm going to have to get used to not calling them Zach and Dirk. Councilmember Jacob, councilmember Burton, welcome. Good to have you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight, other than it was my dubious honor to recognize myself earlier. I don't know if I've ever done that before. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hagan?
I have to say this again because our staff and our snowplow crew did an awesome job. You know, my neighbors not only had me on the back, but they came and plowed my driveway. So not, I don't think that was a favor, but anyway, my hat's off again to the snowplow crew, so way to go, staff.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me be here. It's welcome to be on council. It's a little bit different view from this perspective. Next week, I'm going to hold my first town hall meeting as a council member, and your everybody will be at 7:00 PM, one week from tonight, here in this building, in the community room. So if there's issues you'd like to talk to me about, I'd be happy to meet with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items tonight, but since it's taken us 55 minutes to get this part of the meeting, I'm going to hold both of those until remarks. So I just ask that there be a little bit of a delay before we adjourn the meeting, so I can be sure to get those out this time. Thank you.
I'll make sure. And I have nothing tonight, other than welcoming the new council members as well. I have, we will move to citizens' comments. I have one signed up to speak tonight, and we will hear from her first, Alexandra Ephremo.
Mayor and council, let's pause a moment, please. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal face, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected, and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. I just want to say again, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the council member that behaved, in my opinion, terrible on April 29th. And I was told, somebody said that that council member threw a pencil, and I was told that she didn't, I mean, that person did not throw a pencil, but apparently, it was a missile of some kind. So maybe it was the pen that they threw, but that council member did throw it. I'm still waiting for an apology from that council member to the mayor, to the council, to the people of West Jordan. And I'm still waiting. An apology, I feel, is very much needed, and I'm not going to give up. When we do something wrong and bad, I'm sure that council member tells their children, hopefully. Anyway, but I do want to say one thing. I want to applaud Craig Dearing. He started the Rotary Club here in West Jordan. And just for all of us to know how awesome that group is, this last year, the Rotary Club got sponsors throughout West Jordan. They gave out to third graders a dictionary. It's awesome. And there is a definition of apology in here as well. But they gave out 3,200 dictionaries to third graders all over West Jordan, north of us, South Jordan, all over. 3,200 books, 27 schools, third graders. This book is awesome. It has a short thing about every country in the world, about the presidents, about the calendars. It is absolutely awesome. There's one girl that had it in third grade. She finally took it with her to college. So we want to applaud the Rotary Club of West Jordan and all their sponsors and what they have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any item? We do have four public hearings tonight. If you're here to speak on one of those items, you'll have a time later in the meeting. Other than that, now would be the time to speak.
I'm here.
Please state your name and address.
Jalen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. First off, I want to start by thanking Animal Control. On Monday, we had a little critter that died. I knew, they took care of dogs and cats, but at least they were able to take care of our little, I call it a pig, but my son's a guinea pig. Also, I want to mention about the snow drivers. Wow. I don't think, let's see, I moved here in 96, and I don't know how many times I've seen them, just in the last couple of months than I have the whole entire time I've lived here. Like, in my neighborhood, I think I saw them twice until this most recent time period. I was excited when they shoveled the snow in front of my neighbor's driveway. However, they still park those in, they're putting them more out in the road, and it still blocks my driveway. But anyway, that's my little beef about my neighbors, but I'm really faced with the snow drivers. I also wanted to mention on 7B, that the validity bonds. I'm actually pleasantly surprised to see that that has been corrected this quickly since I brought it up last year, so I'm very pleased with that. And also, it's been nice walking in here. There's just a different, I don't know about everybody else, but there's a different atmosphere in here, and it's nice, and I hope it continues forever. Please, please, please. So I just wanted to say that. And surprise, Chris, it was positive. Just kidding, I'm giving you a hard time.
Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Please. We know your name, but please state it in your address, please.
Steve Jones. I live at 3234 West 6920 South. I do appreciate the presentations that were done today on water, but there is one little aspect that, and I kind of wish Bart would have been able to stay just a few minutes. One of the things that really kind of grinds me a little bit is, we're counsel to conserve water, and we do things within our homes to try to do that, but it never seems to amaze me that they turn around and you hear on the news that, well, because we conserve water, we're using less water, we're going to bump the rates up because we're not getting enough for revenue. To me, you want to know how to help people conserve? Don't come out with things like that, that tell me that I busted my bucket, I've put in different valves, I've, you know, turned my nozzles down, I've changed my watering times, and turn right around and tell me that my rates are going to go up anyway, because that breeds, I don't care. So just my two cents worth. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the citizens' comment portion and move to consent items. No one else? Councilmember Rice?
Can I call 7E?
And councilmember Hagan wants item D, so D like dog and E like heckle.
C is a turtle as well.
Which one?
C is a turtle.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Nichols? Move to approve the consent calendar, less C, D, and E. Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Rice. Discussions? Seeing none? Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Mayor Rawl?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes 75.
Historically, we've always moved on to the closed session. Are these going to be long discussion items on these, or are they just brief? Like typically, we've had like one line questions and been able to move on. Is that?
It's very short.
Okay. I'm going to, we're going to address the consent items, and we will start with C.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be able to vote in opposition to this one.
Okay. Does someone else want to make a motion to approve?
So I'll approve item, or consent item. I got to go to...
Seemed.
C.
Second. Anybody second? Let's vote.
Mayor Rawl?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
The vote passes six to one in paper.
Item D, councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Councilmember Hagan?
I mainly have a question from staff again. When it comes to, you know, our ordinance, I question why we're putting them on consent. And so maybe just a little more explanation. I didn't have a chance to speak to our city manager about it, but why are we deleting that section? Can you explain that a little more to me?
Some number of years ago, the city council adopted a new section of the city code that authorized a developer to come in and request an extension on a reimbursement agreement that had been entered into during a certain timeframe. As a contracting party, the city would always have the opportunity to negotiate any kind of an amendment to a contract that the other party wanted to discuss. And so in order to avoid any kind of implication or impression that having an ordinance on the books would give, that the city was required to enter into such an amendment just because it was requested, we were proposing to delete that, and that would leave that open for the city to enter into any kind of a discussion or negotiation with the other contracting party as an arms-length transaction as you would do with any other contract.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this, because we did a change on this ordinance and just right after you and I were elected, actually. So I'd like to review this a little more, if that's okay. So I'd like to make a motion to table.
It's a motion to table the item? That motion will fail for lack of second. Return to the council. Councilmember Nichols?
Chris.
Oh. Councilmember McConaughey?
Move to approve consent item D, which is ordinance 16-03.
Second.
And a motion by councilmember McConaughey, second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion. Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, my main concern whenever we change ordinance or anything like that is, especially when it comes to our developers or somebody that owns property in our city, that we've calculated whether we violated their due process. And this one, I think we might tread on thin water here. So I'm opposed to motion based on I feel it might violate our due process of one of
Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rawl?
Yes.
The vote passes six to one in paper.
Consent item E.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rice?
Okay, so this is a surplus, surplusing property. On page 13, under West Jordan Police Department Lease, it's a list of bicycles. You look at item 15, it says the quantity is zero. I'm pretty sure that's an in error, and I don't want that to have to be surplus separately. So if we could fix that to a one instead of a zero.
Would you like to make a motion to approve with that change?
I move to approve Resolution 1601 with the change as discussed.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Rice and a second by councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion?
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rawl?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
The vote passes 70 in paper.
Item 8A, public hearing item, receive public input with respect to the issuance of $7,200,000 storm drain revenue bonds and the facilities to be financed with the bonds. Finance.
Yes, Mayor, as you're aware and council's aware, we have discussed this for quite some time now, these projects, majority of which are on, in two areas. One is on 7800 South and the other is 70th South. And at this time, we passed a super parameters resolution in early December, and now through the process, before we sell bonds, we need to have a public hearing on these items, and no motion at the end is necessary, no decision needs to be made.
Questions? Councilmember Hagan? I've opened the public hearing portion of item 8A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the time. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Alexandra Ephremo, 3735 Jud Circle. I'm against any future bonds. I don't care what it's for. I think that we can wait. And I'm asking for more clarity as to the exact amount. Now, this eight, 7,200,000. I just want to, I want to tell you, I had no idea, when we issue a bond, how much money we pay for interest on that bond. I went down, just for example, this is, doesn't have any, it has to do with bonds, but for example, this is what I found out. 20 years ago, we had a bond that was presented to the people of Salt Lake County, and the bond was $180 million. Okay, I found out, now, they made the last payment of $9 million per... Okay, I found out, now they made the last payment of nine million dollars per year last year. The total amount, I thought it was one hundred eighty million dollars on bond. The bond, the principal was one hundred seven million dollars. And guess what, folks? The interest for twenty years on that bond was seventy-five million, seven hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine. So that's what I want to say. We have money in the bank. I mean, supposedly, we have fifty-four million and I just want more clarity and more openness as to why, if anything of this can be, can be eliminated, that, I just, I, I was appalled when I found out seventy-five million on one hundred and seven million dollar bond. That just is absolutely off the chart. And we, I'm going to say no to every single bond that comes up. We have to start looking into the future. We need to get a little penny bank and say, okay, we're going to put this money, we're going to tighten our belts and by the way, I don't want any more taxes. We have to work within our budget. We can do that. We're pretty intelligent and you all look to be pretty intelligent with the exception of maybe someone. But anyway, I just, I'm against the bond. I will always be against every single bond. We have to start using the money and not wasting money on interest. The Zions Bank was the, uh, bond person. They got seventy-five million dollars on that, on a hundred and seven million for principal. I had no idea it was that high, but it just made me sick, so I'm against any bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this public hearing item? Please speak.
You know, and I'm not sure what our interest rate is in our bonds and I know that's a critical part of, of our finances is, is understanding where things are at. But I also know another critical side of it is, is the damage being done to people's homes. And I am grateful to this council for correcting thirty years' worth of flooding in people's homes that have, they've spent tens of thousands of dollars correcting. All of this has to be balanced and, and if that, if that takes, you know, having a bond to balance it out now, I've, I've been given some further information and, and, you know, if I had to do it over again, I, I would probably do it a little different. But the thing is to get the, the problem solved and, and I'm not willing to wait another thirty years to keep homes from being flooded through no, no part of our own that we have absolutely, as homeowners, no control over. So, we've come down this road, we're, we're far enough down the road that it takes a little difficulty to, to backtrack, but I do think this bond needs to go through so these projects get cleaned up and then, once those projects are cleaned up, I do have to agree with Alexandria that, that we have money that's not being used, that's sitting there, that far exceeds what is prudent and we should be using some of that money to, to alleviate some of these things in, in our, in our fiscal budgets, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing, item eight A, and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a quick comment. I very much appreciate the, the comments that were shared during the, the public hearing. Even though I may be in disagreement with some of them, I very much appreciate the folks who got the right to share their, their opposing point of view. I do want to make a quick comment to something that was stated because I, I think I probably disagree with one of the comments made, but I'd like to explain why. There are some cases where I feel it's appropriate to bond, other cases where I don't feel you should bond. I don't think we should be bonding to handle everyday maintenance. If we do something like that, we're going to be a world of hurt. With something like stormwater, you have something that's going to last a very, very long time. Just for sake of simplicity, let's say we have a project that's going to last fifty years. If we were to try and pay for that all upfront and say, we'll collect enough tax revenue over five years, then the people who live there for those five years are paying for something that people for forty-five years beyond will be getting basically for free. They won't be paying for their use on that part of the system. So when you have a project that is highly capital intensive, requires a lot of money and it's something that has a long life, bonding is a tool in this case that allows you to spread that cost over the people who will be using it. It seems to me more fair to try and spread that cost out. Maybe somebody moves into the city, they live here for two years, they pay two years' worth of money into the system and then they move on, rather than they're here for two years, they're going to have to pay enough for forty-five years' worth of service, much of which they won't be here to enjoy. So I, I, I think I disagree with you, but I want to at least share that perspective and give an understanding as to why this is something that I'm going to be supporting. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hagan?
I'm just going to concur with my councilman here because that's exactly what I was saying.
Mayor?
Yes?
Make a comment?
Mark?
And Councilman McConaughey is exactly right on, on that issue. The other point is, we were able to get, secure a interest rate of one point nine four, which is excellent for a city and you can't do that on your own, so we can start the project and move it at today's prices. If we decided to save money for five years to do that project, you well know in the construction business, the cost of pipe doesn't reflect the cost of living. It's five, ten percent every year and finally you have a project that you can't afford anymore. So that's why we use bonding and that's why it's a good tool for us to get a problem solved immediately.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it. We don't need any further action on this. Item, public hearing item eight B, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance sixteen dash zero four, approving a rezone of point three-three acres from MP Manufacturing Park Zone to SC three residential shopping center zone for property located at eighty-nine ninety South, fifty-six hundred West. Boden Vest Limited. Mayor Kate Buckner, applicant. David?
Yes, uh, this is a very small piece of the property at Ninetieth South and Fifty-Sixth West. It was previously a public facility, I think it was a well or a pump station that is now decommissioned and in order to make the zoning consistent with the balance of the property, we brought this forward to the council. Staff is available for any questions.
Questions from council on this item? Looks like you're off the hook.
Good.
Um, we are going to open the public hearing right now, though if you wanted to speak, now would be the time on this subject, so.
I'll just take a minute or two. We have thirty acres there. The corner is the only part that's not zone commercial. I've had it twenty-seven years and I'm not going to be around another twenty-seven years, so we'd like to work with the city and Dave Buckner and see if we can do something with it. Just a couple of things, we fought long and hard with Utah to get access, so we have access. The one access that is still up in the air a little bit is Utah required that we share an access on New Bingham Highway on Fifty-Sixth West and they won't let us do that until New Bingham Highway is vacated. And I know you don't have anything to do with that, but that's something that's still out there. So, anyway, we're glad to work with the city and Dave and see if we can get something there to make it more beneficial to the city.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, item eight B, and return to the council. Councilmember McConaughey?
I have a motion if there's no comments. And since I'm being on their head, I move to approve ordinance sixteen dash zero four.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacobs. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Jacobs?
Just, just for clarification, this is that corner property that we were looking at on the, in the redevelopment agency meeting, so I knew it was coming up, I just didn't know if it was today.
Okay, that's good. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seventy in paper.
Public hearing item eight C, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance sixteen dash zero five, approving rezone of thirteen acres from CM Heavy Commercial Zone to M-one Light Manufacturing Zone for property located at fifty-six, fifty West Old Bingham Highway, SME Steel Sandblast Building, SME Steel Contractors Incorporated, applicant. David Oka.
Yeah, SME Steel would like to put up the sandblast building. The height of the building does, is restricted, would be restricted because of the current zoning. The proposed zoning would allow that, I didn't put that, the new building in and very little impact to the surrounding area.
I will now open the public hearing to item eight C. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Now would be the time.
Long ways up here. Craig Dearing, eighty-seven fifteen, eighty-seven seventeen South Royal Crest Drive, West Jordan. I'd like to say, I'd like to speak in favor of this motion. This is one of our largest companies, they've been here many years, they're very involved in the community, but most importantly, it's a wise thing to do to allow them to expand right there. And so I'd like to just say, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close public hearing, item eight C, return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Nichols?
I have to pay for a motion if there's no comment. That would be on it. Oh, you have a comment?
I, I did have a quick question.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. So it's a relatively large parcel that is all CM and it's just this one little chunk that's being proposed to be changed to M-one and you said it's primarily because of the height of the building that's being proposed?
That is correct.
Is that something that could be better addressed through a variance rather than a rezone?
Either way, we could look at that. This just seemed to be the most prudent way to do this.
My personal preference would be not to kind of piecemeal things together. This almost feels like spot zoning, so I'm a little hesitant, but it's, Scott has something to add.
Yeah, I'd have Scott chime in on this.
Raise the project planner on this and it actually includes more than a small piece, thirteen acres. We don't have the slides up, but this would include the last remaining section of CM in that zone or in that area and the M-one would basically kind of fill in the gap and, and make it congruent with the rest of the M-one and M-two zones in that area. CM is kind of a commercial manufacturing hybrid. There's no access to this back piece of the property and so commercial viability is next to nothing and so it just makes more sense to make it consistent with the rest of the zoning in that area.
So I'm looking at page eleven of the document that was included with the agenda. It's the exhibit B, the zoning map. The other thing I'm noticing, we've got, it looks to be a s... Yeah, it's right here. I'm questioning what these properties are that are right behind it and how that'll be impacted. Are these, I would assume that these are manufacturing facilities as well? Will that?
They are. And to address your other question, Councilmember McConaughey, about a variance, the criteria in order to, to grant a variance is very restrictive and you've got to look at the shape of the, the property, the topography. There's really no one thing that we can point to and, and say, yeah, this qual, this may qualify or, or allow for a variance and so this was the best solution to allow for SME to move forward with, with this request.
I think I feel comfortable enough to move ahead. Thank you.
Maybe for the public's interest, but they, these are one of our biggest employers, biggest companies in our, and I think just where this site is, if you're going to put the aerial map up, that would be very helpful and we can see it.
He's trying. Councilmember Hagan, please wait until you're acknowledged as mayor before you speak too.
So maybe just to clarify a couple of things, this is, this is the site, it's kind of hard to tell here, but this is now the Mountain View Corridor, which is just off to the, the west side of the property. Uh, the property that we're looking at, SME Steel actually owns property that's north of here. Uh, it's zone M-two, everything that's kind of the south is zone CM. So there's the, the corridor there. On the east side of that, it's also zone CM, just rocking that power corridor. This property that's further to the south is also zone CM. This is a water detention basin. Really the only access to the property, as Scott was mentioning, is, is front of the north and so these, these properties really kind of are connected and they're kind of isolated. So, um, as a, I think an M-one zoning would make a good transition from the CM to the M-two districts and then the other question that you had, or the other thing you had brought up was whether or not a variance could be granted as opposed to going, a rezoning of the property. Typically, the variances are, they're, it's, it's more hardship based. It's, it's not, they're not intended for new construction unless you've got some kind of an oddball shaped piece of property. So really don't think in this particular case that variance would work simply because it's a, a new building on a piece of property and there are options.
Can we move to the slide that had the satellite?
Sure. There it is.
Yeah, this is much more helpful. Thank you, that, that takes care of my question.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Ray, just real quick, why, why the M-one zone when the SME to the north is, is M-two? Just can you explain it ever so much?
M-two is, is the heaviest of our commercial, our industrial zones. M-one is a little lighter, industrial. This is, this site is really kind of for outdoor storage and that's why we really kind of selected the, the M-one zones because it doesn't have a height restriction in it, plus it kind of reflects what's the property's currently being used for and kind of the general nature of the area. Future Miami's map calls this light industrial as opposed to a heavy industrial zone. So we just thought that would fit the, the general area.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Hi, it's the motion and I concur with those comments. We're, we're grateful to SME Steel for what they contribute to our community and move that we rezon the property as requested and pack it today.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes seventy in paper.
Public hearing item eight D, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance sixteen dash zero six, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, Section thirteen dash two dash three, definitions, Title thirteen, Chapter five, regarding the permitted and conditional uses and amending Section thirteen dash eight dash twenty, special residential facilities, citywide applicability, City of West Jordan, applicant. David Oka. David Oka.
Yes, I'd like to turn the time over to Robert Thorick for details and to address this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I tried to put as much in the staff report as I could, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council on this item? Looks like you did a good job. Robert?
Thanks.
Now, open the public hearing portion of this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, now would be the time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of item nine D, and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to jump on a motion. I'm one who actually set the table this a long time ago, and therefore, I move that we approve ordinance sixteen dash zero six.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes four to two in favor.
Okay, moving on to business items. Item nine A, discussion and possible action on ordinance sixteen dash zero seven, approving the project area plan for the Copper Hills Marketplace Community Development Project Area located at ninety-two zero four south, fifty-six hundred west. David Oka.
Yes, pursuant to the item that was in the redevelopment agency, where they approved the plan, the legislative body of the city must also approve that plan, so, the information for that previous item is still applicable to this particular item.
It's the exact same item, right? Okay. Discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no discussion, I will move to approve ordinance sixteen zero seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Business item nine B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution sixteen dash zero five, appointing Mayor Pro Tem for two thousand sixteen. Mayor Roth. Right out of the chute, I would like to make a motion that we approve Councilmember Chris McConaughey as Mayor Pro Tem for the two thousand sixteen year. Second. So, I have a motion by Mayor Roth, a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
I guess I should have stated that I talked to Chris, and he was...
I figured you probably had.
I was playing with the idea of voting against, but figured, no. Thank you, I appreciate the comments.
Item nine C, business item, reconsideration of approval of Resolution fifteen dash two two nine to declare surplus, and received public comments prior to disposing of significant city-owned real property as follows. Approximately six point five acres located at approximately seventy-eight hundred south and New Sycamore Drive, approximately nine point seven acres located at sixty-five forty-three and sixty-four sixty-three west, seventy-four hundred south, approximately twenty-three acres located at forty-six fifty-two west, seventy-eight hundred south. Councilmember McConaughey, you had this brought back for reconsideration.
I did, thank you, Mayor. We had this on a prior meeting, and there were quite a few moving pieces at the time. I had voted in opposition to that, not realizing that some of the moving pieces had been otherwise resolved or removed and were included in this, therefore, I asked for the reconsideration. Therefore, I think we have to do this in two pieces, right? First, so that being the case, I would move to reconsider Resolution fifteen dash two twenty-nine.
Second. I have a motion to reconsider item fifteen dash two two nine, and by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it will now be reconsidered.
Unless there's any further comment, I'm ready to make the motion.
Oh, one, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. I thought that I was familiar with all the property listed here, but there's one, or I guess two parcels, the nine point seven acres at sixty-five forty-three and sixty-four sixty-three west, seventy-four hundred south, I'm not familiar with that piece. Can, do we have a map, or is there anything that we can look at? Or can we say what's there now, or what's not there, or can we say anything about that?
Councilmember Nichols would like to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I can explain, it's just, it was not too far from your place. It was originally designated as a regional park, and we've since backed off of that idea.
Okay, that's the piece I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Now, Councilmember McConaughey.
I would move to approve Resolution fifteen dash two twenty-nine.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Okay, Councilmember McConaughey, you reserved some remarks for the end, so we'll start with you and see if there's any others.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to relay appreciation, as many have already done regarding the snow plow. I received a lot of comments about that, even from residents in circles who had never been plowed before. A couple weren't completely plowed, but the residents were happy with the attempt that was made, obviously, logistically, some of them were just impossible, but I've been specifically asked by three different people to relay their appreciation to these snowplow drivers, and I've heard from probably two dozen others, just comments in general. I know they spent a lot of time out over the holidays, early mornings, late nights, a lot of multiple shifts. Thank you, their work is often underappreciated, but not by this body, obviously. Second comment, or second thing, I received some concerns from a resident who lives off of Thirteenth West and Seventieth South. She's with the, I can't remember, the, her community council, and they're looking at some of the safe school walking routes. They have concerns about some of the crossings on Thirteenth, I believe just north of Seventieth. Would I be able to pass her contact information over to Public Works and have somebody reach out to her for that? I think I'll send that over to you, Wendell. And then, item number three. I made comments about this in a prior strategic planning session, but it's been a couple of years, so I think I'll just reiterate here. With regard to the presentations that we have, I very much appreciate the time and effort that folks put to making these presentations possible, but I do have concerns about the time that some of them take. My personal preference would be to see some of these presentations, if it's going to be more than three to five minutes placed as a business item, rather than up front. Today, we had to wait almost an hour to get to the citizen comments. We have one presentation that was thirteen minutes, another that was twenty-one, so just on those two items, we're looking at almost three-quarters of an hour, and that's just my personal opinion, the majority differ, but I would like to see if we make a change to the way those presentations are handled, and use them primarily for recognition of citizens, otherwise, see it included probably as an earlier business item. That's all my remarks. Thank you.
We'll try and look at that. We worked on this, and I like the format that we used previous, where it's kind of an open discussion, and the ones that I had prior to that, it was more a lecturing from, and I want it to be an open discussion.
I'll make one more comment. What we have now is very, very improved to what we had three, four years ago. We had one presentation, I recall that kind of sent me over the edge, that was over forty-five minutes long. We haven't seen anything like that, so we have very much improved. I'd just like to push it a little further. Thank you.
Other discussion before we close? Motion to adjourn would be in order. You have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.